Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the school committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meetings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into the B-CAD government channel, Table Access channel. The B-CAD government meetings Facebook Live feed are over the phone at 408-1893... I know. Yes. Is that the right number, Bobby?
One second, I was linking another document, hold on.
Well, let me read the number anyway, 408-418-9388. The access code for the meeting is 1296086334, and password is Tuesday. I think, I think that should do it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if everyone's here. Mrs. Bond, are you here?
Present.
Mr. Foss, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Mrs. Simon?
I'm here.
Mr. Murphy?
Yep.
Mr. Nelson, oops, Mrs. Monaco?
Wish you the best of luck and look forward to working with both of you. I did, however, want to take an opportunity to just say a couple of words about Steve. As Christine said, we had ample opportunity to talk about and talk of Kristin and talk to Kristin last time, but I just want to take a second if I could. He's obviously been on the committee for a long time, 24 years. You know, I go back a lot sooner than that, later than that, actually. We played Little League baseball together back when we were kids. So I've known him a long time. He was an excellent school committee member. He was very analytical, smart guy, well-spoken, cool, calm, collected, the whole nine yards. And I happened to watch the B-CAD Candidates Night as they had each of you on after the election was completed, and Steve was the first one to go. And if anybody hasn't seen that, I would encourage you to watch it because I think he was just the epitome of class, dignity, well-spoken, congratulated the opponents, and just handled himself well. And that was just a small window of what he's done for the last 24 years. So, and this is in no way meant to disparage or anything about the two new candidates. I'm excited about working with both of you, but I did want to point out that Steve has been an excellent candidate, excellent school committee member for the past 24 years. He's given a lot of time to the town of Burlington. He's been a very valuable, very valuable member. Hopefully, we'll still see him going forward from time to time. But I just wanted to take a minute to thank him for his service, thank him for his efforts, and the town is a better place due to those efforts. So, good luck to the new guys, and thank you, Steve, and for all your work.
Mrs. Monaco, if I may also make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I also wanted to express my thanks and appreciation to Steve Nelson for all that he did for the schools and the town in the years he worked, was on the school committee. I didn't work with him as long on the school committee as some of the others, but I will miss him and want him to know my gratitude for everything he did. And I am sorry we didn't get a chance to tell him in person at the last meeting, but I will certainly, I've made my own personal comments to him. I also want to welcome our new members, Mr. Foss and Ms. Bond, and look forward to working with you. I feel that you both have an awful lot to bring to the committee, and I look forward to our work together going forward. If there's anything I can do to make that easier or to help you, I'm happy to do that. So, welcome.
Okay, I would like to just comment that everything, Steve, if you're watching, everything Tom said, everything Martha said that was nice. If anybody said anything that wasn't nice, I'm not including that, but everything that was said that was nice, triple it coming from me. You're a great friend, and I will miss you terribly. Okay. Is someone trying to get my attention? No, okay. So, I would like to mention something that I guess won't mean a lot to some of you, but there are those of us who will remember well. There was a guidance counselor for many, many years named Elaine McCabe, and she has recently passed away, and I just wanted to note what a wonderful, kind person she was and a great guidance counselor. And I just thought since I got news this morning that she had passed away that I would mention her tonight. So, let's see, what else have we got here? Approval of the warrant. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant. All those in favor, Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
You have to unmute yourself.
Mr. Foss?
Sorry about that. Just a point of order, is there an opportunity to discuss or just ask a couple clarifying questions?
Generally, that's done through Nicole before the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Since I started, all right, we can stop the vote if you want to ask the questions and then redo the vote.
Thank you very much. If someone could just clarify very briefly, because I only had, we only had a couple days to take a look at the warrant, just to tell me what we're looking at. Is it just the past couple months, or is this, and there were two of them, so if one of them, just a couple of words from Nicole would be great as to what I'm looking at.
Nicole?
So, basically, every time that we have a warrant on the agenda, it's expenditures that we are processing for your approval. They, all the expenses sort of run through my office, and then they get also vetted in accounting, and then they're printed on the warrant and processed when you guys both done.
Thank you very much. And the ones that were sent for today, what period of time does that cover, please?
It's on the warrant? Are they dated?
Just to, I mean, there were, it looks like March through May, or maybe early June as well. I just wanted to confirm that, please.
And Nicole, is that accurate, Nicole?
I don't, I don't have those in front of me, but the dates should be, should be right on them. I can look that up and let you know.
No, that's not necessary, I just was curious. Thank you very much for your answers.
Is there anything, is there anything else?
Could I comment also?
Go ahead, Martha.
Clarify. First of all, in terms of the dates, these, I'm not quite sure why there's two. They put a certain number on a warrant, and then they go to the next one. So I'm not totally sure why, but sometimes we get two at any time. It's just grouped into different packets. The other thing is that this was recent, a little unusual because of school closures. So we have some bills that weren't being paid until we made some clarifications, I believe, and Nicole, please correct me if I'm wrong. Typically, they don't, they're not so out of date. And another clarification is that in a sense, that the term warrant is used for these documents, but what they are is the approval to pay these various bills or invoices. So different businesses and different industries use different terms, but in the school department, we say it's the warrant, and it's a list of all the invoices and bills that we're paying. Go ahead.
No, thank you very much for that, and I appreciate all the info.
And also, I regularly ask Nicole if I have a question about an item on the, I see I'm not coming through too well, so let me see if I can speak closer to the microphone. Nicole will answer any questions about any specific items. I also found it a way for me to learn more about the district and what kinds of services and products we purchase and how we spend the money. So I, you know, have less, I have a lot fewer questions now than I used to have. But I think the term warrant can be very confusing because we also are going to be talking about warrants per town meeting, which are a different kind of warrant. So those things are, can be confusing.
Okay.
Does this one include the out-of-district placement tuitions that were approved at the last meeting?
I believe so, Nicole.
I'd have to take a look, but I believe that they would be in that period that you have in front of you.
Thank you very much.
It looked like it was going through it, but.
Yes, it did. Okay, Carl, I'm sorry you didn't have more time to look over it.
No, no, that's okay, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, that's great. So, if you have serious questions that are not, you know, just brief little things, feel free to, to email Nicole with any question on the warrant.
Will do.
In, you know, when you get it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Abstain.
Ms. Monaco, votes aye. That's 401. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of 6:26:20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
On the agenda, it says it's a minutes of 5:26:20?
That was a mistake.
It's 6:26:20, but that date, it's not June 26th yet.
Oh, I'm 5:26.
5:26.
Right, Sharon, 5:26.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will say that motion.
All right, so does anyone have any questions before we vote on this?
I'm listening to the school committee meeting. They're going to talk about the results of that survey.
I guess I have a question. Do we usually get a copy of those minutes before the meeting to look over?
They're on the agenda.
Okay, wait a minute. I saw it down there, you're right, you're right, you're right, never mind.
Okay, so I'll put the motion to a vote. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public participation. Does anyone have anything to discuss, bring up, ask about that is not part of the agenda? If there is anyone out there, please speak up.
Chris, we have a question, we have a question about extended school year.
Beth's question.
I can discuss extended school year when we do talk about the update, so that's from Ms. Colburn.
Yep. Beth, is that good, or do you want to talk about it?
Nope, she's fine. She said okay.
Okay. All right, so the very next thing, Martha asked me if she could have a minute to make a statement. So Martha, how about you do that now?
Yep. So, after attending the rally on the Burlington Town Common on Saturday that was organized by some of our current and past students, I felt the need to make this statement. I am anguished, and I feel the need to address the killings of black people and the protests across the nation. I would like to add my voice to the resounding chorus of supportive messages in solidarity with the peaceful protesters seeking lasting change against longstanding systemic racism in the United States. I hear you, I see you, I support you. Here at home in Burlington, several courageous young Burlington residents, both current students and alumni of the Burlington Public Schools, spoke out last week about painful and racist experiences they have had in Burlington and in Burlington Public Schools. We are saddened and angry that these hurtful things are happening in Burlington and in our schools. All of us, as well as all of the white residents of Burlington, have the privilege to educate ourselves now about how systemic racism affects people of color. Unfortunately, black people experience it every day. To quote Dorothy Mullough, the 2019 graduate of Burlington High School, Burlington is not an exception. Clearly, now is the time to listen to the voices of our fellow Americans whose causes have gone unaddressed for too long, and to amplify those voices. To improve our justice system, it is essential to listen to our citizens. The same is true of our school system. It is the goal of the Burlington Public Schools to provide a safe, supportive environment and education for every child. We need strong statements, but we also need to take action. Change takes time, but we need to quickly propose and implement our next steps. In this country, it is difficult to talk about race, but it is a conversation that we, as a community, must have. I acknowledge the need to mention, we are not saying that we are bad people, rather that we are good people who want to improve on our imperfections. I'd like to have a request, a report at our next school committee meeting of exactly what we have been doing so far and what the next specific steps will be. I would also like to request that we have a more in-depth discussion of these issues at our next school committee meeting, so we can begin the process of looking at the next steps and taking action. Thank you for the time.
Dr. Conti, do you want to just mention the efforts that are underway?
Again, Mrs. Monaco, we have lots of efforts underway, and we even had some derailed because of the building closure. I think we're all very upset about the situation that's going on, and listening to some of our former students, our equity committee has been meeting, and we're really trying to listen to our former and present students about some of the changes they want to see. We have faculty members who have been involved in these efforts for years and years, and they've been really struggling the last few days, but helping us frame these conversations. So, I agree with Ms. Simon, and I think we can, we can discuss these more in depth at our, at our next meeting. I think the student representative, Sarah Shake, for the school committee next year, who's replacing Bridgette, is also working on the district's equity committee. So I think maybe if we can schedule it, hearing from her, having the committee here directly from her, I think might be a good step at our next meeting as well. So we'll try to make all those arrangements for the, for the committee.
Can I just ask, oh, never mind, whoever was typing muted, nevermind, thank you.
Yes, I, I just want to throw in one little comment about all of this. It was very upsetting to hear, and I'm no stranger to hearing about the few that are not, that don't do the right thing, and they really can cause an issue. I appreciate what's, what's happening. I spoke with Dr. Weiner on the phone, and we talked at length about doing some sort of a joint, joint work with the Board of Health on this, and Martha brought up to me that the Board of Selectmen would also like to do some work, joint work. And I think we need to look at, at programs that teach all of our kids what some of them haven't learned yet, and that is sensitivity towards others. And I would like to also include in that group the special ed kids who are oftentimes not very happy by the way they're treated. So we have a lot of different minorities, and I hope that the programs that we put in place will, will teach all of our students to be kind to everyone, no matter what, no matter what our differences are. Does anyone else have anything to say before we move on?
Thanks for bringing it up, Martha.
Okay, Eric, do you want to go into the update?
Yeah, yes, Mrs. Monaco, and again, we have some slides to share about the, the survey results, but we, but before we get to that, I just want to give sort of a general overview before we get specific and then take some questions. So, the state has, has released guidelines for summer programming, for summer camps, and for daycare, so they've been out for a couple weeks. So I know Brendan at Park and Rec is looking at those guidelines. He's working with Susan Luminallo at the Board of Health. We actually have a meeting on Thursday, and we're trying to figure out how to offer programs and follow guidelines to keep everybody, keep everybody safe. Some of those programs may, are not connected to the schools, but some may require school facilities. So that's the reason that we're involved, and, and it's just something that we have to talk about because there may be additional, one aspect of it is there may be additional cleaning, for instance, that's, that's required at the end of each day or throughout the day, and if we're doing our regular summer work, we have to make sure we have the staff available to, to clean and disinfect. We're having the same conversations about Summer Central, which is our before and after school program that meets during the summer. Again, we are hoping to run some version of Summer Central, but we're working on a plan that has to be approved by the Board of Health, by the Department of Public Health, and we really want to make sure Barbara Conley, our nurse leader, gets a look at it as well, and, and want to make sure that we can provide a, a safe option for, for kids. So, what's hard to explain to, to everybody is those guidelines come from a different state agency, and they're separate from the, from the school guidelines, even though they all involve children. So we got an update on our extended school year guidelines, actually on Sunday, on Sunday night. We've been reviewing those. Our initial planning is still, is still in place, and our initial planning was for, to offer a remote extended school year, and that's really where we intend to start. There were meetings today to look at the guidelines and to most needy students, even though they're all entitled to extended school year, and we are working through that. So our hope is by later in the summer that we will be able to offer some in-person extended school year services, and I'm being vague because we just got the guidelines on Sunday. We were meeting, again, a bunch today, and we'll be looking at the, the questions and then the obstacles that we need to overcome. One basic one, just because I was quoted in the paper, was making sure that we have the protective equipment that both our students and teachers will need, and then training on how to use that if there's going to be contact. So just to repeat, I want to make sure that I'm clear, is the summer camp guidelines are different than the extended school year guidelines. We just got the extended school year guidelines on Sunday. We're working through those. We are going to start our extended school year remotely. That's what we had planned, and that was what, what was available prior.
That's who he is, and that's what we do in this community.
I also think, Mrs. Monaco, there seems to be a pattern to the state guidance where they're coming out, and we'll talk about it later on the agenda, when we look at their early protective gear guidelines. They're coming out, I think, with the worst-case scenario, and, and they seem to then, in a few weeks later, relaxing a little bit. And so, I think that's one of the challenges for us, is honestly not to overplan, because things are changing every couple days, and I think we just need to try to be as flexible as possible, but make sure that we're providing a safe environment for both students and teachers. So I think that's the, that's the challenge. But, but again, I just, we are starting remotely, because that's, that's where we are, and that's what we have planned. And then we'll be looking to try to do some, again, in person towards the, as the summer progresses, towards the, towards the latter part of the summer, so.
And I appreciate that you didn't close the door to it, is really where I was going. So, committee members, has anyone got any comment on Eric's update to this point? Anyone want to speak?
Chris, Ms. Colburn wants to make a comment if Tom, if Mr. Murphy wasn't, was finished.
Yeah, I wasn't starting. I'm glad, thank you.
You're good? Okay, Beth?
Hi, everyone, thank you for the update. I just wanted to, I guess, make a note that I understand that, you know, DSC is not the same as the regulatory body that regulates summer camps, et cetera, but I, I do feel that if, if we are going to allow camps and Summer Central to happen in schools, then we should be allowing and making work extended school year in some capacity in a school. If you're able to clean a facility for Summer Central, you should be able to clean a facility for extended school year. I understand there's so much more to it, you have staffing, et cetera, but if you're going to be getting supplies, cleaning, staff, I would love to see that effort in extended school year.
Eric, do you want to comment on that?
No, again, through the chair, Ms. Colburn, I actually agree with you. I had that same exact conversation with people at the state, because from a parent's perspective, what's the difference if I have one child in a Park and Rec program in a, in a, in taking an art class in a school building, and I can't send my other child for extended school year services to the same school building? I understand completely, it makes no sense. My belief is, as we sort of progress through this, all of the state agencies are going to coalesce on the most permissive standard. I just think it's going to take us some time to do that, and, and so, again, I, Ms. Colburn didn't say anything that I disagree with. I just think we're, we're, again, we just got the guidelines on Sunday, and we're, we will do our best to, again, to offer in-person programming as soon as we can. None of us are saying that the remote is as, will be as good as having the students back in, in our building. So again, I, I agree completely.
Am I understanding this correctly, that the rules on the camps for Park and Rec are different from the rules for us on extended year, and it's not up to us, it's up to the rules that the state gives us?
They're coming out of two different agencies, and they, they certainly started in different places. I think they're coming closer together, but I do think a lot of the camps, the programming is outside. I just, I, there are different rules, but I, I think, as I was trying to articulate, it doesn't really make, makes that much sense. If kids are in buildings, kids are in buildings. So I certainly appreciate that comment, but, Mrs. Monaco, we are dealing with different agencies, and we are bound by those guidelines, but any plan we put together, and this includes Park and Rec, has to be approved by the local Board of Health as well. So I think they're going to So I think they're going to make sure that we follow whatever precautions that we need to follow. We will not be ready to do that on July 8th, is sort of the point I wanted to make, even though we will be delivering a remote extended school year, starting in early July.
Okay. Does any committee member wish to speak?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Bond, Mr. Tom, who... Did anyone speak up?
Mr. Bond?
Yes, Dr. Conti. I've only seen the guidance from the state that was released last Friday, the one that detailed all the PPE requirements and everything. Is there a way you could share a link or the source for the other two sets? Just my own curiosity.
Yes. So a lot of the early stuff came from the EEC, which is a different... That's the Early Childhood Commissioner, so that's a different commissioner. I will get those to you. And then, like I said, we just got guidance on Sunday night, so I can share those with you as well.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Tom? Tom, you got anything?
I'm all set, Chris. Thanks.
Catherine?
No, Eric, I assume you're going to send that to everybody, or if you could send what you were going to send to Carl to me as well, please?
Ms. Bond, when someone asks for something, I send it to everyone every single time. So you'll get everything that everyone else gets.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Monica?
I just want to support both the parents' concerns about what's going on, you know, why Summer Remote has to be remote right now, and that the state requirements are the way they are. And I want to thank Dr. Conti and Mr. Larkin and all the people working on it because the guidelines keep changing. And we get the guidelines on June 8th, and summer school starts less than three weeks, or, you know, whatever. So I appreciate all of what people are trying to do. And I do trust that Dr. Conti is trying to make it work the best for the students. And I hope that we'll get a better solution than what we have right now. But thank you for everything that you're doing.
And again, through the chair, Ms. Simon, it's really Mary Hood and Deb Clark who are doing all the planning. And we're trying to give them oxygen and support them as best we can. So they're really trying to make sure that we have some in-person instruction, if possible. And I just... The bar is very high. So I think we'll probably be coming back to you with some problems to solve, maybe some resources that are needed. And so this is just the beginning of this conversation. And as I said, we did get the guidelines on Sunday. So we've been scrambling a little bit to try to figure out how to meet the guidelines.
Yes, and thank you to Mary Hood and to Deb Clark as well. Eric, before I ask for audience questions, do you have anything else on your update?
The other update we got was some early PPE sort of guidelines, but I was going to talk about those later in the agenda. Patrick wanted to... We did close out the survey, and we did get a few hundred more responses. The results really didn't shift that much from our presentation last time, but I wanted to give Patrick a chance to talk about the Remote Learning from Home survey, which was on the agenda, and then we can speak back to them. Yes, ma'am?
Hang on for one second. I understand that Eileen had a question, and I just want to know if she wants... if it's specific to what we were just talking about, or she wants to wait until we finish this piece? Is Eileen on the meeting?
You can't hear me? Eileen, you were unmuted for just a second, but you're muted again. Try it. Yes. Back and forth there.
You're still muted.
How's that? Does that work?
Yes.
Yes, my computer for somebody is flipping in and out. In any event, it can wait. Thank you, Mrs. Monaco.
All right. Okay, go ahead, Eric. Sorry.
No, that's okay. So Patrick, do you want to share some of the numbers? And then I think we have a slide for the committee?
Yeah, there's a few slides. I just wanted to show the... There's very little difference, but I can quickly flip through the slides just to show the results. We did have about 300 more responses. I think we had 757. And then we finished up with 1,054 responses. So in some of the elementary schools, it was about 40% response. Middle and high school was closer to 20. Bob, do you want to throw those up? All right. So the first slide will be the results from last time. Just to remind people, we were at about 79% of a positive response rate on the first question. Are you clear on the remote learning plans, expectations for your child? And again, if you want to flip, Bob, the results when it was closed, there was, again, an increase of people responding, but that percentage stayed the same. So the next one, please. The next question was, to what degree have the materials posted online for students or provided by teachers been helpful? We had about an 81% positive rating, somewhat helpful and extremely helpful were the two most responses. And if you flip to the next slide, Bob, that stayed the same again with increases. I think actually the somewhat helpful increased like by 2%, and extremely helpful dropped by a few points. But again, 81% overall positive response on that. The next slide. Describe your child's overall experience with distance learning. Not engaged, you can see, was about a quarter. Engaged and highly engaged were 76, and that was from last time. And now with the 300 more responses, it jumped by a point. So again, no significant change. The next question, Bob. Do you feel the amount of work your child received during distance learning has been appropriate, insufficient, or too much? Again, this was a 61% positive rating because both insufficient or too much were both negative responses. And they were both right around 20% when we looked at them initially. And Bob, do you want to flip it? The appropriate number went up by 1%. And again, insufficient was 20, and this time, too much fell from 19 to 18. And the last one, I think there's more. The work my child is getting through distant learning is manageable for me as a parent to support. So those are our initial results, a positive response rate of 65% the first time. With the two positive responses either being yes, it's enough for me to support, or the clarification that it doesn't apply to a parent because the student... Typically, our older students, we saw a big increase when we got, especially grade 6 through 12, the children were able to do the work independently. So that 24% was also a positive response. And Bob, want to flip to the most current? And that jumped by two points to a 67% positive response on that question. And I think there's a couple more slides, Bob. This one, I don't think we did share with you last time. Which of the following improvements would you most like to see your school make during remote learning? And the biggest response, about half of the parents, was provide more guidance to me on student learning. So I think part of that, when we start to look at the choice boards, and they were somewhat complicated. And in addition, with the tools of technology that I think in some cases we overestimated, like parents would be comfortable with, but they've never used these before routinely. So those are something that's on the higher-than-high priority list when we head to the fall, is to make sure, you know, we're actually, unfortunately, looking at parents as co-teachers in some cases, when we look at our youngest elementary students. And we want to try to relieve that burden as much as possible. And just, everybody's at home, they're encouraging their students, they're trying to support the work. And we're going to try to be much transparent about... Much more transparent about the expectations, overshare compared to what we might do typically when we're all in school, parents are going out of the house to work, and we're in our typical routines. That needs to change for us if we're back in any type of remote learning in the fall. Well, what was the next one? On how, on average, how many hours per day has your child been engaged in schoolwork? This one was interesting. The two highest responses were 1 to 2 hours and 2 to 4 hours. 2 to 4 hours was actually about 45%, and that's a big span. And then 4 to 6 hours was 15%, and you can see less than an hour. And we can break that down by grade level, too, within that tool, to see what grades those hours are typically coming from, which responses. And I think there was one more, Bob. I wanted to share the open responses. We have, again, 1,054 answers to these questions. And there's something that we've started looking through and highlighting trends to these three questions. And in addition, we pushed out a teacher survey at the end of last week, or actually, it might have been, you know, these days blend, so I apologize. It may have even been yesterday morning, but we've already got a good response rate from teachers. We're going to keep that open for a week or so. And we're due to send out a student survey for students in grades 5 through 12 that will be out by tomorrow morning on that as well. So I did get two emails from specific parents that, for whatever reason, they didn't get the survey in their email. I gave them the PDF of the original survey and asked them to respond to the questions and send it back to me in email. And we will be looking through those responses as well as we start to plan for the fall, when the guidance comes out, especially if there's a significant amount of remote learning continuing. We'll be looking at all those responses. I just want to, again, if parents still out there for some reason didn't get the survey, it's important that they reach out because it's a possibility that their emails in Aspen may not be correct. That's our student management system that we send out information through. So we want to hear from folks if they didn't get the survey at this point. And again, I'll leave it open to questions at this point.
Okay. Eric?
I can go through some, Mrs. Monaco. So Patrick, there was a question about providing the information by grade level. And I know we had some grade level slides last time, so we can certainly update the grade level ones.
I can publish a detailed slideshow with all that online, honestly. It's closed, it's... There's nothing to hide for us. We can try to put more slides up that shows responses by grade level and so forth. I just didn't want to throw 50 slides at you tonight.
Where will people find it, Patrick?
I can post it, put it on the website. And again, if it's a post that we want all parents to look at and ask questions as we're thinking about what we might be doing in the fall, we'll make sure that we send it out through Aspen to make sure everybody gets it as well.
That's great. Let us know.
I will tell you that I'll get a more detailed, significant presentation with all those graphs and slides by grade level by the end of the week and get that posted for our Friday update. Eric and I have been sending out a Friday update to families, so we'll make sure that that's part of this week's update.
Patrick, there was a comment about what is our plan to adapt or hand-hold parents where it's needed? And again, I don't think those are completely firm yet, but we have talked about putting together a sort of a help desk-type situation. So it is something that we're talking about. We don't have an answer to that yet. There's a question.
Yeah, once our plans get clearer and we know, yeah, we're in for a good deal more of remote learning, if that's the case. We already are starting to plan a summer PD program for parents to start to make them more familiar with the tools that we'll be using. Again, if we're going to be in a heavy remote situation, that will be part of our summer plan.
Will there be surveys for students grades K through 4?
Again, there's not a survey for students in those low grades. And I mean, I know we could probably talk about grades 3 and 4. Could probably, I think, as you get down to the lower levels, I feel it's probably more of a parent survey because they have to sit there and help the students through. There's not an instrument for that. Panorama, which does these surveys in districts across the country, doesn't go below grade 3 with these surveys. So again, this is just my opinion. It's not just up to me, I understand that. But we were not going to survey parents at those low levels because... Or students, because we've already surveyed the parents, and we feel that those responses from the parents are probably more significant at this point.
Again, madam, through the chair, Chris, I'm trying to go through some questions here. There's a comment, next year's remote learning plan needs to diversify beyond screen time. And then that was seconded. And that there was some feedback that the biggest negative was the inconsistency amongst classes and grade levels. So that's actually... Patrick, if you don't mind me saying, that's something that we've talked a lot about, is that we're finding that we have to be much more top-down during... And much more directive during the building closure than we typically are classroom-to-classroom. And I think that even school building-to-school building. So I think that we will continue to try to increase the level of consistency amongst classes and grade levels, you know, into the fall, depending on what our plan would be. Is there a way to share information with incoming K parents? We'll make sure that we do that. Aspen is just our student information system, and that's where we hold all the parent emails. So one way that we communicate with parents, as well as with a... It could potentially be with a phone call, if you think of a snow day, would be we can send an email to every parent or every email that we have for every student we have in the system through Aspen. So that's what Aspen is. How will kindergarten learning be addressed? How would remote learning be able to teach skills taught in kindergarten that are foundation skills like handwriting and how to hold a pencil properly? These are not skills that can be taught electronically. Ms. Torch, we... I think we'll all readily admit that our remote learning is no match for having learning in school. My belief is that we're going to have to have some sort of in-school presence, especially for young students, starting in the fall. I'm not sure whether that's going to be on an every-other-week or on other some-type basis. But again, I believe there'll be some time where kids are in school in the fall. And again, we're hoping the guidelines, we were promised they're going to come out on June 15th. My belief is, even if we get those, they're going to change again depending on the levels of infections as the summer progresses. But I believe there will be some in-school component to our preparation for the fall, for just those skills that you mentioned that can't be taught electronically. Will teachers provide instruction via video during remote learning in the fall? Or will instruction consist of posted materials only? It would probably be, Ms. Crowell, a combination of both asynchronous lessons that families and parents can look at any time, that would have a teacher-video component and a content component. And then during the week, asynchronous component where teachers would be available and schedule a time to interact with their students and connect their students. So it probably would be a mixture. And again, I don't want to talk too much about what's going to happen in the fall because we don't have our guidelines yet. My belief is there also will be an in-school component in the fall. I'm just, I don't believe it's going to look like a regular school opening. But I believe everyone is pushing to have the kids back in school for some of the time. I would like to know how that will be handled for incoming K if remote learning continues. Again, Ms. Bunker, I think that we have a lot more explaining to do once we get our guidelines. We understand that, and our plan is really to continue to regularly communicate as we learn more about our guidelines and as we put our plans together for what we intend. Again, my belief is there's a strong push at the state to have students, especially our younger students, back in school, back in classes for some of the time. They're talking about limiting class size and spreading kids out and doing a bunch of other things. But I think that there is a lot of push to have students back in school.
Can I jump in?
Please, Patrick.
I know a lot of the questions were also in the survey, so we can keep going like this, and I'm fine with it. I do want to answer the C... I do want to answer the CSO question. So if people aren't familiar with CSO, it's kind of an online portfolio system where kids can post work and teachers have the option of turning on the ability of students to see their classmates' work and we do agree that it does start to open discussions about privacy. And so one of the things where we have a solution within CSO for next year, again, when we're using it, if it's in a remote situation where there's a bulletin board in CSO where it's student, pardon me, teachers can choose to post certain students' work or pieces of all students' work, like it would be done traditionally in a classroom. This is just something we want to highlight with teachers. It's kind of a new resource through CSO because I think CSO itself is getting some of the same feedback that, that we're hearing from our community. And then what was the, the next one? And that's part of also these types of questions and how to use the resources is something that we're planning on highlighting with our parents this summer. And the question about a parent forum, I mean, our process for, for doing this work when the guidelines come out is going to be to have our district team come up with our first draft of our plan and share it with our families for feedback. I don't know, again, that's up to other people whether that becomes a, a parent forum or not, but certainly we need to post that and hear responses from our community, feedback, and then tweak our plan. Again, as Dr. Conti said, our biggest concern is we're going to be doing a ton of work, which we're all up for, when the guidelines come out. And then we're going to post the plan, get feedback from the community, revise the plan. And then in August, the state could also throw a new wrench in and say the guidelines have changed. So it, again, I just want everybody to be realistic. But yeah, to have, we need a forum or some way for people to have a response. I think the school committee provides that forum in a lot of cases. But if we want to do that separately, again, that's something that's not up to me and I leave it to the board and people to make sure that this community feels like they're heard because it's an important conversation.
All right, Patrick, I'll jump in now. We did the privacy, outdoor spaces around the school to help with fall return. We absolutely are, depending on weather. Right now, they are, there are a lot of restrictions on recess. We've heard early, no cafeteria. They want kids to stay in their classes. And then there would still need to be social distancing when outside. So again, I, I think if, if those guidelines are relaxed a little bit, we will use every possible space that we have to try to provide some sort of safe in-person instruction. Can we be sure to include incoming K parents? Yes, we will. There should be a forum to react to that before the final is committed to. Again, we are going to be getting feedback throughout the process. I work at the pleasure of the school committee. If they'd like to have forums, we will have forums. We will get feedback. I'm not sure if that would fulfill someone's definition of a forum. I'm not sure we're going to be able to gather in person, but we will, we will get feedback on plans that we, we develop. Martha, you had a comment? I'm sorry, I'm going pretty quickly.
You answered one of my questions. I just wanted to comment from way back when the survey is posted on the website. I often have trouble figuring out where it got posted. So Mr. Larkin, where will you post it? Will it be under District News?
Yes, District News is where it will be posted. Typically, our process, and we're open to obviously feedback on the process. When we post something significant, it goes on the District News. People can set up emails, I think, Mrs. Simon, you have done that, to receive those posts immediately. But we also go into Aspen and send out these links so to try to make sure everybody gets that. And in addition, they go on our district Facebook page, which again, I know not everybody's on Facebook. But we think that Aspen covers all the bases. And I really encourage parents to go to our website, to our District News section and click on subscribe because we don't send an email for every piece of news that goes up on there.
Eric, I noticed way earlier that Liz Di Tucci wanted to ask a question, so.
I, Ms. Monaco, I was, I was waiting for it to be written. I didn't realize she wanted to speak. Mr. Di Tucci, I apologize. I, I went through the written questions first, so.
I had, I had put up that if anyone wanted to speak, just to put their name down instead of the question. So Liz, if you're there.
I am, thank you. I, so is this, I was just confused on the agenda item. Is this the actual forum where we could give additional feedback? Or is there going to be something additional later or both?
So at the moment, this is the best we can do because we can't meet. We will have opportunities such as this on all of our remote meetings. And once we can meet in public, then we can have input in person.
Okay, thank you. And I, so just a couple of quick comments. So I realize this is super difficult and I appreciate the survey going out. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. So 35% of parents who answered the survey said it's unmanageable. And so my feeling there is that there are probably additional parents who are in such an unmanageable state that they couldn't fill the survey out. So that number I, I think could be low. The other thing is the way some of the questions were worded was the definition of work when it comes to schoolwork could be taken a lot of ways. And my struggle was to understand what was busy work versus what was mandatory versus what was, you know, new learning stuff. So I just wanted to throw that out there that that part was hard for me to answer with just kind of the, you know, four choices there were. Because I didn't quite understand when it said work, you know, what the definition was. So again, I, I feel the teachers have really done their best. So it's not a ding on them at all. But I definitely think there's a lot more work to do here. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your feedback. And again, Mr. Di Tucci, I apologize. I didn't recognize that you were waiting to be called on. I apologize for that.
No worries, thank you.
And one of the challenges with answering questions now, again, I'll just restate and I feel like I'm being repetitive, is the survey was really a look back and we're going to take the survey. And Patrick, how many parent comments were there? You're on mute, Patrick.
Patrick, you muted.
Rookie mistake, I know. I have to find everybody else. So we had 1,500 responses and those responses each answered those questions. So if you want to multiply times the number of open response questions, that's how many responses we have to look at. So.
To the, to the parents in the meeting tonight, we also have a lot of individual parent comments that we are going through and, and looking at that provided us more, more detailed comments that we are looking at. But that was really a look, a look back. What's hard answering some of the questions about what's going to happen in, in the fall is we don't have the guidelines yet. And my belief is even if we did have the guidelines, the guidelines are going to change. So once we get those guidelines, we will share them publicly. There are going to be public documents and we will start our planning process. And we will make sure that as we go through different iterations of what the fall is going to look like, we will get, we will get, make sure that people know what we're trying to do and then we will, we will get, we will get feedback. My belief right now is it's not going to be a typical fall, but I believe we will have some options to choose from. The way it's being described to me in my meetings is the state is going to be about 85% prescriptive. And they may leave up above 15% for some local variation, depending on where things are with the virus. And I think that percentage is going to change based on where the state is with the number of infections. So, so that's sort of all the information I have right now. And, and again, we are going to communicate fairly regularly and hope everybody is engaged in that, in that process. But again, I'm just going to restate, I don't think it's going to look like a regular fall opening for us in, in August.
Eileen, are you, are you still there? Did you have your question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this is off topic. Last week, I sent some questions relative to town meeting tomorrow night. So my question is, will you be sending the answers to those questions to Amy Warfield by, let's say, noon tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Dr. Conti. Good, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for the remote learning quote parent forum?
Mrs. Monaco?
Yes.
I just want to say again, I know it's important for every person to be heard. I'm a parent, so I responded to my child's survey in another district. And so if people feel like they have to share, they have more, they want to talk, like they can call us, they can send us emails, like we're not trying to stop conversation on this. We'll take every bit of advice or every thought we can get. So again, I don't want people to feel like they didn't really have their voice heard by just filling out the survey or, so again, they can email me. They can call the office, happy to return calls and discuss this because we're, we're all feeling their pain, believe me.
Yeah, I know. Okay, are there any committee members that wish to speak to this issue? Catherine, go ahead.
I, I know that, again, we don't know what things are going to look like, you know, right now or next year. But I know some of the concern is with the screen time that a lot of the students are, you know, have an increase of screen time. And so I just want to make sure we're looking at alternatives of, of ways of getting homework to the students. Again, this is something throwing out there. I know there used to be like the homework packets that went through to the students on paper over the summer. And maybe we look into doing something like that, you know, starting next year if it's going to be a mix of kids, you know, being online and in school. And that might help parents out a little bit too, especially for the younger kids.
Through the chair, Ms. Bond, one of the things that we are trying to price out is in looking at our consumable curricular products, we're looking at buying two sets, one for school and one for home in case we have to start. And again, that might be an expense that the school committee will see coming up in, in the next few weeks. So that, that might be, we are aware of that and we are trying to look at some different options. I think the, the copied packets, I think are, would be hard to reproduce at the level that we would need to. But if we look at some of our published materials, we may be able to get some of those materials home.
Okay. Any other committee members?
Yeah, I, I'd like to just.
Go ahead, Martha.
Comment that I just can't even imagine how Dr. Conti and his staff are figuring out how to do all this. The keeping kids apart and the, you know, one kid per seat on the bus. And how do you, how often do you clean? And how often do the kids have to wash their hands? And do they even have a sink? And there's so many things going on in terms of trying to get back into the classroom, into the building. But I do want to say that I've gotten at least one phone call and I do, we keep saying it, but I just want to say that we don't think remote learning is a better solution for most students than being in class with their peers and with their teachers. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to do some in-class learning in the fall, given the requirements of the state and, and all those parameters, whether we have another spike in infections. I, I do want to make sure our students are safe first. And I think that the choice to go to remote learning this spring was the right one. But I just want to put out my feeling that if there's a way we can get kids and teachers back together, I'm all for it. If we can't, we can't. But I do want to speak that.
So again, Mrs. Monaco, not to go down a rabbit hole. And again, I, I don't know the answers to this, but to Mrs. Simon's point, I think we agree. But we really.
We agree.
We really need to see the guidelines first. But even if they allow some in-person, if they want us to have class sizes no larger than 10, then we're going to need to probably have some kids in school and some kids remote. We may prioritize our younger kids in school and our older kids remotely or we could shift, we could shift week to week. If we split our kids in half, we're not going to get twice the number of teachers. So I think we would have to have sort of some conversation about what that would look like. And please also remember, not all of our teachers are self-contained in Burlington. So we really have to work with our neighbors because if we have a lot of teachers who live in Billerica and we're on an every other week schedule and they're on an everyday schedule, some of our employees are going to have difficulty managing that as well. So I think that's really why the state is looking at more of a top-down solution so that districts can act commonly. But again, we will share all that information with everybody. We will try to provide the best that we can. And again, the, the foundational belief that Ms. Simon mentioned, and I think I had mentioned before, but I will stress again, is we want your children back in our classrooms. We feel that is the best place for them to learn and we will, we will figure that out. How will special education push and inclusion services work if class sizes are limited to 10 children with only two adults allowed in the classroom? I, I don't know the answer to that. So I'm just going to have to say I don't know. I'm hoping they'll provide us some guidance with that moving forward. So in SLP OTPT pullouts, again, Ms. Coburn, we were having those same conversations, absolutely.
Can I make another comment? Yeah, I, I know that, again, this is thinking farther out than maybe we're ready to. But, you know, I know we want, need to think about purchasing face masks or whatever the options are. Are we able to approach the powers that be that, can we use like the visors instead of the face masks? Because I think that would be a lot easier for kids and the students because they'll be able to see the teacher speaking. And my understanding is they're as safe as, if not safer than a mask. And I think it might be, again, easier for the kids because they're not always having to worry about pulling up and pulling down and it might stay on their heads better, might not fall off as easily. I just don't, I, I just want to make sure we're looking at all the options as far as what we supply to teachers and what they're able to wear to class.
Through the chair, Ms. Bond, we are. So again, we, we just got the, the. Barbara Conley looked at our first 12 weeks and it was very interesting. If we were to follow the guidelines, we would need, I think, 78,000 disposable masks just for the first 12 weeks of school. But please don't, I think things are going to change. We also needed, I think, 400 to 500 visors. So I think the plan was to have teachers and visors from, from the state. My understanding is the state is trying to put together a pathway, a purchasing pathway for districts to utilize, even though districts will have to pay for the items that they purchase. So they don't want 351 districts all competing for the same products. So I still think we're having those conversations as well. But I, my belief is the, those requirements are going to evolve over the summer, pending on the number of infections that we, we have. But Barbara Conley, our nurse leader, is on top of it. And she's looking not only at options, but as, at other, at other things that they're asking us to do. They're also asking us to have a clean space in every school building if in case we do have a student who we think is exhibiting signs of infection that we need to isolate that, isolate that child. So we, we would have to create those spaces as well. So again, lots of details. I, I feel awful, I don't have every answer. But we will be getting our guidelines in the next two weeks. And again, we will be sharing those. I think we have lots of great educators to help put a plan together. We have lots of great resources in our community to help us fine tune the plan. And we will make sure that we're trying to put it, you know, all, all together for the, for the fall. But it will not be the same as having students in front of their, in front of their teachers. And so we, we will do the best that we can. In the event that we do go back to school, the believe the. event that we do go back to school, I believe the current guidelines for buses state one student per seat, and actually, every other row. From what I've seen in the past, we've already had issues with buses and scheduling. We won't be able to provide adequate buses at one child per seat, because, again, it's one child per seat every other row. So I think we looked at a 77-passenger school bus can maybe take 12 or 13 students. So transportation is sort of, I think, unreasonable now, given the guidelines that are in place. I think they were also asking us to take temperatures before the kids got on the bus. So, again, I think everyone has good intentions with the questions, and I think even the state agencies have good intentions with the guidelines that they're putting out. I'm not sure some of them are realistic, given how schools function. And I think we're, as my colleagues, we are pushing back and asking for more realistic expectations. And, again, we may not be able to provide transportation, or we would provide it on a very limited basis if the CDC guidelines stay in place. So, again, another non-answer, but I apologize. And I'm hoping that we'll see some relaxation of those standards.
Okay. Any other committee members wish to speak? Carl, you got anything?
All set for now. Thank you.
Okay.
And, again, I just want to stress, Burlington isn't going to do this in isolation either. We are working with our colleagues. The Middlesex League superintendents meet regularly. We share ideas. We understand we're compared all the time, so we try to keep up to date on good ideas that are being implemented across districts. And so, again, we will try to get as much input as we can, as Patrick said, and respond to the guidelines. But, again, I'm a firm believer, is they're going to put out some pretty strict guidelines in June to get everyone pretty amped up. And then I believe they're more than likely going to be relaxed later in the summer. So I would even say, when the guidelines don't come out, I'm going to have trouble not overreacting, but I'm saying, I just think, let's wait and see how this evolves, is what I would say. Believe me, everyone I've talked to, including educators, including me, want your children back in our classrooms. We honestly do. So we will do everything we can to make that happen.
Okay, are there any other questions before we move on? Seeing and hearing nothing. BHS graduation.
Mrs. Monaco, this is a meeting typically when we just do a brief recap of graduation is a significant event. And I don't feel it was any less significant this year. It was certainly longer than it typically is. And I want to congratulate all the high school, the graduating class of 2020. I also want to make sure I thank Mark, and it was Deb Deacon's class, so she had a lot of work to do, and all of the high school teachers and administration for putting together, I thought, was a great ceremony, given the conditions that they had to operate in. Again, we did have some comments prior to, how can we have town meeting on Varsity Field and not have graduation? Again, they're two very separate guidelines, and municipal bodies don't have to follow the governor's direction, believe it or not. So we did the most permissive graduation we could get away with at this time, with the permission of the Board of Health. So I think that was sort of the reasoning for it. And, again, I thought the high school did a great job. What I thought, sort of my reflection back on the morning, was that I felt a lot of the traditional graduations, when the students are all gathered, it's a great time for students to... I thought it's sort of a very student-centered ceremony. I thought this past Sunday was a very family-centered ceremony, where the parents got to walk in with their graduate, they got to be right in front of the stage, they got to get a family picture afterwards. And I think some of the positive feedback I got were from families saying they felt really connected to the graduation, and some were even saying they want to keep some parts of the prior graduations and some parts of this graduation. So I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but I do want to make sure I thank the high school for, I think, for just doing a great job, given the conditions that we were in. And I want to thank Mrs. Monaco for your comments that morning and for your stamina. I think you were there for the parade. So thank you very much.
Hey, I had to be there. I had a grandson graduating. Are there any committee members that wish to comment on graduation?
Just real quick, if I could, Chris.
Take your time, Tom.
Just want to echo what the superintendent said. I've heard from a number of people who were down there, including a niece who graduated, that everybody knew what we were dealing with, and frankly, I think the expectations weren't that high. And I think they were all very pleasantly surprised as to how well it went. As Eric said, it was more of a family event, and there was a certain intimacy in it that's not at a typical graduation. So, all in all, from what I hear, everybody really enjoyed it, really appreciated the efforts, and a tip of the cap to Mark Sullivan and the whole crew down there, they did a nice job. Thank you.
Kathy Fazio wrote on the chat, "As a parent of a senior, I wanted to extend my thanks for a great day on Sunday. I was skeptical, but in the end, BHS, Mark, and all the staff did an amazing job making the kids feel special by giving them a ceremony." Thank you again. Well done. I have to say, I was surprised at how well it went, how relaxing it was. And I'll tell you, I've had all positive comments. The kids loved it. My daughter said we should do it this way every year. I think she was half-serious. But graduation was outstanding. And I did see the parade, because I happened to be stopped at the stoplight when every single one of the cars went by. It was a great day for the seniors. I'm thrilled that they had the opportunity to have some fun. Anyone else? Martha, go ahead.
Yes, I also want to thank Mr. Sullivan and all of his staff, who made it happen, because I have also heard many comments of how special this graduation ceremony was. And I'm just very grateful that they were able to figure it out a way to make it special for our graduating seniors. I want to congratulate our seniors, every single one of you, and wish you the best. And I, you know, it's very sad of some of the things that you may have lost this spring, in your last year in high school, and some special events, but I know that you're all going to do great, and I'm really glad that you had a good graduation ceremony to send you off. So, again, thanks to those who made it happen, and good luck, and congratulations to the graduates.
Okay. Carl or Catherine, either of you have anything to say?
Only to echo what has been said and congratulate the class of 2020. I was also very impressed by the student speeches. They were inspiring and very well-spoken. And Eric and Chris, you guys are pretty good, too.
Gee, thanks. And I'll echo the same thing. I heard a lot of good feedback and congratulations to the class of 2020, and agreed, the speeches were all excellent.
All right. I guess we can move on. End of 2019-2020 school year wrap-up. Eric?
Thank you, Mrs. Monaco. And, again, I'll ask Patrick to jump in, maybe at the end. We have some things happening. I think Patrick, at a couple of the schools today, what someone told me is when we closed the schools on March 12, so the schools were closed on March 13, it was like Pompeii. So when teachers went back into the buildings, you know, some of them found food on their desks, and, you know, that was untouched. And the classrooms really were still full of student things. So the teachers have really worked hard to bag all the students' personal items. They labeled them, and I think parents are starting to pick up their student items this week at their schools. And I want to just thank the parents for doing that. And I also want to thank the teachers, because there's a lot of work to clean up after the sudden closure, and gathering everything and organizing everything for the students to take home. We're also going to be communicating with parents very soon about the device pickup. We probably have 600 or 700 iPads that have been distributed out into the community. We are going to need those back after the 19th. So we're going to schedule two days of drop-off at the middle school. So we're identifying one school, so the parents don't have to go to multiple places. And they're going to drop them off, and we are going to pick up the devices. We'd like the chargers in the bricks, the cords in the bricks that we also sent home. We are going to disinfect everything. We need to update the software. And, again, we typically only send home iPads with high school students, so that's only about 1,000. Our plan is to be ready to send all 3,500 students home with an iPad. So that's pre-K through 12, starting in the fall. So we have a lot of work to do this summer, and our... And, again, some of the we'll be talking about at year-end, but we're going to need, again, some additional devices and some other pieces of equipment to make sure that the devices can be sent home. But I think we have to be ready to send devices home with everybody in the fall. But that pickup is going to start. The parent return of their iPads, cords, and plugs are going to be starting the week after school closes on June 19. Patrick, is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, I think that covers it. Again, yeah, we need to update the iPad, so I know it's a pain. I think the middle school actually might be starting that next week, because their last day of instruction, where the kids are going to need them, according to Mrs. Purchase, is Monday. And they have some other activities going on the rest of the week. So I believe, I could be wrong, if middle school parents heard that they are dropping them off next week, I don't want to contradict Mrs. Purchase, but the rest of the iPads, we will be collecting after the 19th.
Patrick, while I have you sort of on and available, also the year-end wrap-up, the Remote Learning Choice Boards, those lessons are ending on Friday, the 12th. We have other activities happening the next week. I know we have many teachers who have scheduled one-on-one live conferences with their students to provide some year-end feedback and some traditional... Sorry, some transitional help. I'm trying to read the questions at the same time. And then, Patrick, are we also going to be sending, making available some summer resources to families as well?
Yeah. So just to Mrs. Coburn, yes, we can send home. We have two things we're discussing, both for potentially ESY and some ELL programming that may go on during the summer. And if there's something I'm forgetting, then it would be the same. I believe, talking to the IT gentlemen, that we still may have you drop off the iPads. We may hand you one that's ready to go, or we may just wait for you later in the summer. But either way, we're going to have you have access to iPads for what the students need to do this summer. So, Eric, can you repeat your question?
Summer resources for families. Sorry.
Thank you. No, I got lost in that one. So we're going to go with the choice board model again for summer resources, but it's going to be a very limited choice board. We're going to be sharing those with teachers, so they can talk to students and families about them during their last week of meetings. So, again, it'll be straightforward. It'll be the resources that we typically make available, and maybe one or two more during the summer. One of the requests was, don't make it too extensive, but let's stick to a foundational list for our elementary kids in particular, that they can access and kind of use on their own during the summer to continue forward.
Okay. School committee members, anything? Going to take that as a no.
I actually have something that's not related to that or to the next topic, but if we can put it up now, then people can have the resource. I just wanted to comment that the district has been providing a lot of resources on racism and on how to talk about things, and children's books and such. And they've created something called a 21-day racial justice challenge, or is it Equity Racial Equity Challenge? What's it called, Mr. Larkin?
I was just grabbing the link. Yeah, we'll post that as well on the website. The 21-day racial equity challenge, it's just meant for us to learn a little bit more about our country's history, and to get those resources that help us start having conversations about racism. And so it's a 21-day different prompts. And I really encourage people to look through that. And I know in my own house, we've been having a lot of conversations around these. I have students in college and high school. So I think, again, people will find it useful. It's not necessarily, it's not meant for our youngest students, but I would say from middle school up through high school, that this would be very much appropriate, and have family members do it. And, you know, if people are comfortable, I'm going to be posting some of my reflections on, you know, social media, but I just think it's important that people have these discussions with, you know, with family, with friends, whoever you're comfortable having them with, and do some reflection, and hopefully it's a learning experience for everyone. I also want to say, this racial equity challenge is heavily focused on anti-racism and stuff that relates to what's happened to Black families and Black people in our country's history. And we are planning on adding to this as we go forward, because we know there's a lot more areas of anti-bias beyond just the Black experience in our country. But given, I think we're at a historic time right now in our country's history, and I think we all should be taking some time to pause and reflect and learn. So that's what we're trying to do.
So I want to reiterate what Patrick just said, that there is a moment in our country's history right now for us to focus on the issues around racism. But I also agree with Mrs. Monaco's comments earlier, that there are other ways, there are other people who have different minorities, or even students who are just different, who get picked on. And, you know, we do need to address, whether it's sexual orientation or anything, girls, women, all those things are important. But right now, in our country, we really need to take a good look at and not meld it all in together. I also didn't look at all of the topics on this 21-day activity, but there's, you can pick and choose. I mean, some of it's overwhelming, because there's lists and lists of books, but there's lots of really good ideas to think about. People can engage if they want to, as Mr. Larkin said, and comment or make a reflection. But even day one, there's a 12-minute TEDx talk, and I didn't write down the fellow's name, Ray Strong, maybe. And it's an introduction to thinking about, how do we make progress on these issues? How do we talk about race? And it could be, it's not threatening, and I felt it was, it could be helpful to people who are like, well, I want to make a difference, but I don't know how to, and I don't want to be attacked or accused of anything. So I would encourage people to look at that. The way to find that is if you do go to the district news on the website, there is a post which has the link to this. And Mr. Kuna, thank you for putting up on your screen the example from the website. But could you also put into the chat, there it is, you... Now, Carl, thank you. The chat now has the link to this 21-day of ideas and resources to be thinking about. So this is a really valuable thing. I really appreciate that the school district and perhaps the Equity Committee has helped put together. So thank you.
Okay, we can get into more about that at the discussion next meeting. Communications? Eric, school building facilities update, or is it Bobby?
We're going to turn it over to Bob. So, again, I think he can share a little bit about the- So again, I think he can share a little bit about the schedule that started on, on Monday with custodians. And then do we have any more information on the insurance claim with, with the water damage? And then I'll let him, I'll let him take over. So go ahead, Bob. I'll, I'll hit you.
Great, thanks, Dr. Conti, and through the chair. So as you all know, we just discussed briefly, we did have voting on Saturday in the wood gym and in the rubber gym. We also on Sunday had the high school graduation. Now we just need to get through town meeting. Those are the big events that have happened in our facilities besides obviously the teachers and administrators being in there and starting to work. As Dr. Conti just mentioned, we've had people working periodically, mostly remotely, but we've had to have people in the building, you know, as needed. But starting Monday, yesterday, we just came back to a schedule within our buildings. So we have custodians in there, we're running a full schedule. In all of our buildings, we do have administrators in the offices and we have teachers coming in again as, as needed to be. So we will have a one or two weeks, what we're calling basically a ramp-up session, where custodians are starting to clean the building. But we also have a lot of leftovers, as discussed, you know, including teacher and student supplies that are in the buildings and the lockers and whatnot. So having the teachers, administrators come back in really to clean that up, get those items for the parents and for the students, get them back into their hands before our custodians can really dismantle the buildings. As far as the insurance goes, anyone who's dealt with insurance knows that it can be a little bit of a pain. This is no different. We've been in contact with the insurance company. They have agreed that the floor is damaged. So we are no longer negotiating whether the floor would be sanded or repaired. They are looking to replace the floor. We have gotten one estimate and we just met with another company this morning. And we have one more company that we're looking at, again, to compare prices, which will need to be submitted to the insurance company. And then any other incidentals that were damaged during the flood. So again, we are making process. We have, this insurance company has committed to replacing the floor. And like I said, as soon as we get those submitted, hopefully we will negotiate on a finalized dollar and then be able to move forward with replacing that gym floor.
Mrs. Monaco?
Yeah.
I have a question for Bob.
Go for it, Eric.
I know, I know in my car insurance, I have a, I have a $500 deductible. Does the school have like a $1,000 deductible for, for this insurance work?
So it's a little bit more than that. It's 100 times that number, Eric. There's a $100,000 deductible on the type of insurance that we have for the buildings. As most people know, there isn't really many things in the buildings that are, are super cheap. That's why that deductible is really high.
So, so again, that, sorry, that was my way of letting committee know that even though insurance is going to be covering the damage, we, we have a $100,000 deductible that we're going to have to cover. Is that correct, Bob?
That is correct.
So.
Eric, was that one of those, don't ask a question you don't know the answer to?
Yes, but I did know the answer as well. So, but again, we have a significant deductible. But again, please keep in mind the cost of the floor is several hundred thousand dollars. So the, the, the scale of problems in a 365,000 square foot building are large. And again, if you look at the total square feet of the school district under roof, we're close to a million square feet. So the, the scale might be a little bit different than people are used to. So the, the deductible is going to be of a scale that people may not be used to as well.
Got it.
Chris?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I just follow up on that. What are the plans to pay for that? Are we, is that an R F T? Is that going to be a warrant article in September? Where are we going to come up with 100 grand? And the second one is how long is it going to take, Bobby? Assuming that the, they process the claim in a reasonable manner? Is it going to be done before the end of the summer? We talked about it into the fall. What's, what's that?
If I can go first, the funding is not defined yet. I will definitely let Dr. Conti jump in on that. We have some ideas, but not defined yet. As far as the companies that we've talked to, the two that have given us quotes have both said that they are able to start relatively soon. One would already have started the floor if we were going to give them the go-ahead and if it wasn't for town meeting. But we didn't want to give them the go-ahead without doing some due diligence anyways. But it does look like we could have something in place. I don't want to overpromise, but I'm going to say before October would be ideal. But I think we can definitely get something sooner than that, is what they're, they're telling me.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm glad this is going to be able to be taken care of and we still have the $100,000 deductible. But it raises for me the issue of, well, what's going to go next? And if something else goes next in this year's insurance, then we will have already paid the $100,000 deductible and wouldn't be paying it again, except I'm very worried about other things that will go wrong. So I don't know from looking at the agenda, but I had asked at our last meeting that we have a list of which things we have gone, have failed in the building in the last five to 10 years, so that we can start looking forward to the renovation at the high school. So we hopefully wouldn't have this kind of a huge, large, that would cost this kind of money. So do we have a list of that or is that not ready yet?
I have a partial list because I guess the question that I would ask the committee and of course yourself, Martha, would be, what are we calling a repair? And is there a dollar value on that? Because we do normal maintenance every year, as you all know. But something like, you know, let's say an A C unit failing and then us having to spend $22,000 on that, it definitely qualifies as a, as a repair slash failure. But again, normal maintenance, repairing a $2,000 valve on that same unit, I would consider that to be, like I said, yearly maintenance. So I do have some numbers and some repairs, but I think that I'd like some definition first.
Well, in my mind, I was looking for the big failures, but I would appreciate having both. So you have a list of the failures and then a list of maintenance for something like that with a $2,000 valve. But if we have a new system, those kinds of expenses wouldn't be there, at least at the beginning. So whatever you have is, 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 would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Other committee members have any questions on this? No.
There's a question about whether the, is the $100 deductible for each claim? From Ms. Creedon, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Ms. Creedon. Bob, do you know?
I actually am under the understanding that it is for each claim, unless we can make some type of connection that the two claims are relative to each other.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I have not read anywhere, been aware that it would be per year on the deductible.
That was an optimistic guess on my part.
Yeah. Bob, is, there are a whole bunch of things included in this claim though, correct? It's not just the floor.
Right.
Yes, correct. So for, for example, we all know that it was up in the penthouse, up on the roof of the high school where the break slash leak happened. That came through the ceiling. So we're looking at ceiling structures, electrical for lighting, light switches. Then onto the floor, we're looking at V C T vinyl floors down the stairs. We are looking at wrestling mats, concussion mats underneath the wrestling mats, the wood floor in the gym. One of the questions asked is in the entire gym floor. The answer is no, because it's a large gym, but the majority of it, due to the age of the gym and how many times it's been resurfaced. That's why the insurance company had recommended to replace the entire gym. And just repairing it wouldn't satisfy the needs. But yes, it's not just a wood floor in the gym that has damage to it.
Bob, we also have some custodial overtime because the crews had to come in and clean up all, clean up all the water.
Not only that, there's remediation too from a private company that came in that does emergency services. That helps us to stop the water, that helps us to shut off electrical, that helps us to get fans going, humidify, dehumidification devices going as well too, so we can get moisture out of the air and out of the floor. So yes, there's just two additional charges for labor, ours and outside companies.
And Bob, out of all those projects, the, the wrestling mats in take top priority, is that correct?
I didn't even know that we had a gym floor at all. I was only concerned about the wrestling mats.
Thank you. And we, we do have a question about how could this have been avoided? Closer roof inspection. So didn't this happen late on a Saturday night or late on a Friday night? And we're actually very fortunate that Mr. Sullivan came in to work on Saturday morning. Isn't that correct?
Yes, I don't know that it happened late on a Saturday night, but it might have happened early, early on a Saturday morning. And then Mr. Sullivan came in early in the morning as well, but there was a few hours in between. I don't have the exact timeframe on that, but Mr. Sullivan was there roughly around 11:30 in the morning. And the amount of water definitely tells us that it was going for a while. That being said, I think we were right in the transition period of when we would be shutting down some of these units anyways. We had some hot and cold days. And anytime when we get into like the beginning of spring or the end of, of a season, is when we get into these transitional times where you have some days where it's 90 degrees and then the next couple of days it's back to the 40s and 50s. So this is that timeframe where during that week, we were still seeing 30s at nighttime, but then we were seeing mid 60s or even 70s in the daytime. So these heating units were not off and we were circulating hot water. Again, we do have inspections. We have a crew that does go around and look at this. But typically, really can't see inside some of these metal fixtures or some of these metal pipes, copper pipes and so forth. So they don't exactly tell you when they're going to go. I think that some people will say differently, but I think if, if the pipe is definitely damaged and old and corroding or oxidizing and turning green, I think there's a case to be made. But sometimes really it could be the hard water that we have. It could be the way that a joint was welded, something like that. And you know, failures do happen.
Famous Burlington Water, Eileen, I, I was under the impression it was the entire floor, but I guess majority is fairly close to entire. And also I thought it was a fairly new floor, but it was a old floor feeling recently refinished. So just to correct my errors in my comments.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Murphy asked about where the $100,000 is going to come from. I, I think it may depend when we're invoiced and it's probably going to connect to our next bunch of conversations. So if you don't mind, we can maybe have this incorporated into our next few agenda items.
Go for it. Is there any other question or comment relative to the facilities?
Again, I, I just, just to remind everyone, we're, we're going to have to do many things concurrently. So we're going to have to plan for the fall and we're going to have to talk about logistics and, and social distancing and P P E. We're going to have to continue to talk about social justice and racial inequity. And we're going to have to continue to talk about our building needs aren't going away. So we will have plenty for you all to be involved with and, and do moving forward. And I wish we could just focus on one, but we, we're not going to have that luxury in, in the, in the short term. So through the chair, we have our communication, we have monthly financials. We have some fiscal 20 budget, the spending and savings analysis that we were asked to provide and also year-end purchasing. So the next three agenda items are all, all connected and linked. But I think it would best if we start from a, some, from a common point and those would be from the monthly financials. So again, I'll turn it over to Nicole. And the format to the new school committee members is going to look the same. The same pages are going to happen. On the first meeting of every month, you'll get a, a report on the district's financial status from the prior month. So this is the first meeting in June and what you'll see is sort of, sort of a year-to-date through May and a really projection to the end of the year. Several years ago, we over, we over expended our budget. Again, that's not a surprise to anybody. That's my responsibility. That was my mistake. And the school committee has since put in processes in place where I don't think the over expenditure was, could have been avoided, but I think knowing about it ahead of time was, was one of the major issues. So this process where you get a monthly statement that updates where the district is, allows us to avoid us not knowing where, where issues may arise. So again, with that, I'll turn it over to Nicole. I'll mute and she can talk you through the financial summaries that you get at the first meeting of every school committee meeting. And then I'm going to try to preempt one of Ms. Sickler's questions and I apologize, is we will post these after, after the school committee sees them. We try to get them online as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Conti, through the chair. So in front of you, you have the monthly financials. We, we start out with the revolving fund summary. All of the revolving funds are, are doing fine with positive balances, with the exception of school lunch, which shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone. We've seen this growing, obviously through the closure. This isn't just staffing, it's also, you know, additional food and other commodities that, that went bad and weren't able to be used to prepare lunches. We have received all of our reimbursements from the state for the lunches that we have sold. So as of 5/31, it's that $209,000 deficit. You'll see later on in the financials that I project that out. And we'll explore where we're going to be able to cover that. If you go on to page two, this starts with the operating budget.
Nicole?
Yes.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I just want to take a little bit more time again to the, to, to Ms. Bond and Mr. Foss. And I'm going to see, Bob, do you have these to post by any chance? So we're going to try to put them up. And please, I don't mean to be patronizing. If you guys know this, just tell me to move on. But revolving accounts have a particular definition. So revolving accounts are very purposeful. So if we have a revolving account for cafeteria, for instance, we can't use the revolving account funds for the before and after school program. So the, the funds within a revolving account have to be used for that revolving account purpose. And that purpose needs to be, needs to be defined. Revolving accounts, school, school districts don't get to carry money over from year to year. Regional school districts do and towns do. But a school district like Burlington, any money that we don't use gets turned back to the town in our operating budget. In our revolving accounts, that money can stay in the revolving account as we go sort of year to year to year. So if you see a balance, for instance, in a revolving account on June 30th, that doesn't mean we have to turn that balance over, over to the town. But it's, it's important that the, it's important that the revolving account, the revolving accounts don't go into the, don't go into the negative. So what you should be looking for on this page is, or the, again, some typical questions that we get are what's the purpose of the revolving account? Why is it there? We have some revolving accounts that were created, that were used for 10 years and then not used for 10 years. We try to close those out so they don't just hang around forever. Okay, Ms. Creedon, I'll get to your question in a second. And so, so, so I would again, look for the, the, on the revolving account, make sure that it's an active account. And then if you see a negative balance in the account, we always get questions as to why there's a negative balance because there really shouldn't be a negative balance on the revolving account. And I'll address school lunch specifically in one second. But does that makes, was that helpful to Ms. Bond and, and Mr. Foss?
Very much so. Thank you.
Okay, the school lunch program, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. Monaco or Mr. Murphy. I think prior to my arrival in Burlington, so say 15 years ago, the revolving account accumulated a fairly significant debt and town meeting ended up needing to close out that debt after it accumulated over many years. So we try to pay for all of our lunch program by selling lunches. And what I would say is every year we have those great intentions and it just, it it just it never works out. We typically lose between, I don't know, $25,000 or $30,000 in a typical year. We can get to what that average has been, some years more, some years less, depending on food costs. We look at what we charge for lunches all the time. But if we increase the prices of school lunches too much, we sell fewer lunches. And we also put some families in hardship who need access to the school lunch program. So what I would say is just be prepared from my perspective to lose lose some money in the school lunch program. But the trick is we don't want to lose too much. The agreement with the town is we close out and Nicole, make sure I'm telling this correctly, is that we we zero out the school lunch program essentially every year. So it's not the negative number isn't allowed to accumulate. Is that correct, Nicole? Again, I believe the reason we have such a high balance now is because we've continued to pay and support our cafeteria workers during the building closure. And obviously we haven't sold any lunches since March 12. So we will need to zero out the school lunch program prior to fiscal 21, or we'll do it sometime this summer. So again, the school lunch balance will start with will start with zero. So I'll stop for any questions about that or on school lunch in specifically. We have a question in the chat. Ms. Creedon, parents ask for refunds from the after school program. What was the decision? Ms. Creedon, we gave parents in the after school program three choices. They could keep their balance in and we would, if they were planning on using Summer Central, we would apply the balance to their summer programming. We also offered parents the opportunity just to donate their balance if they wanted to. We also said they could get a refund. So we tried to provide every family with with three choices. And again, that was due to some feedback that we got from from some parents and I think Mr. Tucci answered the question better than I did. So so thank you. So that's the revolving account. So that's different from our operating budget.
I have a question about the operating accounts this month.
The revolving accounts, ma'am, I'm sorry?
Yes, the revolving accounts.
I apologize, Ms. Simon, I just was clarifying.
No, you're right.
Go ahead, Martha.
I think Nicole said this, but I wanted to understand it better. That I the number, the deficit has grown even though we haven't been serving lunches. And so is that primarily because of how much food got had to be thrown away or given away? Or is there another major reason why it kept growing while the schools were closed?
Because Martha, Martha, I can answer that, I think, and Nicole can correct me. But we we continue to pay our workers. So so that that we we committed to paying everyone through the closure. So that's that's what it was. Ms. Sickler asks a net loss of 150,000. Any reason to think this won't happen again next year to this degree? Ms. Sickler, again, we have some decisions to make before I can answer that question. So whether we're open, I don't think we're going to be allowed to use cafeterias, but we will probably be preparing box lunches, prepared lunches that we need to deliver to the kids. I'm not sure what the costs of those box lunches are yet, but it's going to be something that we need to look at and solve prior to prior to the fall starting. And I would say we have to feed kids. So I I think that I don't have enough information yet to answer your question. And I apologize for that.
Let's go back to Nicole. Eric, are you finished?
I'm finished with the revolving accounts. I was going to pass it back to Nicole, Madam Chair, for the operating budget and page two.
Okay, go for it, Nicole.
Thank you. So on page two, we start with the operating budget. And at the last meeting, it was asked if we could show sort of what what we thought would have as a surplus in some lines and where we thought we might be spending over. As we've sort of reiterated throughout this whole meeting, that we have sort of a lot of more a lot more unknowns than we have knowns about. You know, how school is going to look in the future and and what our expenses are going to be when we come back. And we're trying to, you know, acquire a lot of, you know, PPE and those sorts of things now. So this this operating budget report here, we added another column. Typically you see a projected column, which assumes that, you know, we're in school and we're going to be spending how we typically spend. For example, line 31 substitutes in the projected column, we would have had that we're going to fully expend that with obviously right now, we're not using daily subs. So we've sort of taken out all of the the projected expenses there. So you can sort of see if you compare it to last month's report, which is up on the website, you can see sort of where we where we changed our projections. And you can see the the line items that we're showing sort of monies that we're not anticipating to be used. However, there are some lines, Bob, if you could go to page three, please. So page two was all salaries. Page three is all the expense side of the operating budget. Here we did the same thing where we sort of adjusted our projections. And again, some of these aren't perfect either. For example, on line 59 utilities, you can see that as of 531, we were projecting probably a $404,000 surplus on that line. And these were based off of our consumption since the closure. Obviously without buildings open, we have less consumption. And even that changed since we've prepared this because I got an email from our our utilities company and turns out that not all of our meters are digitally read and they're not sending meter readers in. So even though, you know, our consumption may have been lower, they're billing us based off of estimates. So even even though we are sort of trying to do our best to project what what these costs are going to look like through the end of the year, things like this sort of keep popping up, so it's hard to to be able to put an exact number. You can see at the bottom here that the total FY20 operating budget, the remaining budget shows a 2.2 million dollar expense. I mean, a 2.2 million dollar surplus there. And just under that line, we've added in a reserve to fund the CAF deficit at year end, which is the revolving account that was presented on that first page. I know that that number does not match what was on the first page, but this this number includes as of right now, what we think through the end of the year, our payrolls for cafeteria. We're projecting about a $233,000 deficit. So if we take that off of the remaining budget amount, it's a 1.9 million surplus that's showing there. Also, a lot of these, while we were able to, you know, sort of say where we're going to save some money, substitutes, utilities, our transportation, you know, there are also additional expenses that we're going to be over on. One, legal, our custodial overtime, custodial supplies, IP and networking materials, you know, any hardware and computer things that we need in order to allow students to have access to remote learning. So all of those areas are areas that we're expecting to overspend. We don't have sort of exact figures on all of these things yet. A lot of this is a moving target. And even if we want to, you know, purchase all of, you know, the PPE that we are going to need when we return, a lot of a lot of those things aren't even available right now and we're on wait lists with a slew of vendors in order to get the things that we need. So that that 1.9 isn't isn't it's a moving target. It's not set in stone that that's what we're going to have remaining for the end of the year.
Nicole, Nicole, thanks. Chris, I'm not sure if you saw that Mr. Eiler has a I have a comment to follow Mr. Eiler if that's if that's possible.
You want you want John to go first?
I always want Mr. Eiler to go first.
You're too good to me.
There you go, John.
First off, Nicole, thanks. I can see you put a lot of work into adjusting all the numbers there. I know it takes quite a bit to do. Just I just wanted to point out a couple of things for people that may not have last month's financials right in front of them. For me, the interesting takeaway from this, and obviously a lot can change. But the interesting takeaway is that relative last month's financials, it's a little over a million increase in the surplus for the operating budget. So, you know, basically, hate to put it this way, but having the school shut saved us $1 million estimate at this point. And the for the accommodated account just jumping ahead, the relative saving there, the surplus increased by a little more than 300,000. So between the two budgets, there's about a 1.3 million dollar increase in the surplus. So that that's just an interesting thing to note when comparing to the previous month. Thanks.
Okay, Eric.
Again, Ms. Bond and Mr. Foss, again, please, I apologize. And I really don't like hearing myself talk as much as I'm talking tonight. Page three and page four of page two and page three, I'm sorry, of the monthly financial statement, that's our operating budget. The number that I look at before I look at any other number is the adjusted remaining balance. That's the important number to me. That one needs to be positive. And Ms. Creedon is going to ask every month, is there enough of a balance? And I usually say I don't think so, but right now I think we rest assured that we are going to end the year with a positive balance in our account. There's something that that when you go through your training, if the with the School Committee Association, there'll be a term that's called limited fiscal autonomy. And that applies to school committees different than town departments in that page two and page three of our operating budget. And the school committee manages that number as a whole, so as a bottom line. So the categories that the school committee budgets are important because they convey intent. So a salary intent is different than a materials intent as an example. So a supply and material intent, but within a salary line or within a materials line, the school committee has flexibility to move money around. So if we need more supplies in the library than we do in athletics during a particular school year or during during a time after the budget was created, the school committee has the ability to manage to the bottom line, which is why that adjusted remaining balance is so important because that bottom line is is one of the things the school committee is really important to manage too. And I think sometimes new committee members and new town meeting members, the way the budgets are voted on at town meeting are very different. And the school budget is always voted voted as a bottom line because that's what limited fiscal autonomy is in state regulations. Full fiscal autonomy would be the school committee would have the ability to levy taxes. And there are some states where there's a separate education tax. So the school committee both both levies taxes and then does that, but that's not Massachusetts. Town meeting is still the body that approves the money for spending and that'll happen tomorrow night at town meeting. They'll approve a bottom line number and then it's the school committee's responsibility then to manage that number to the bottom line throughout the fiscal year. So again, page two and page three of your monthly financial reports again are very important. My first turn is to page three. And it's that bottom line number that I look at that's really important. I want to stress something Nicole said. This shows again, a 1.9 million dollar supposedly balance. Please remember that we could also consider $100,000 insurance deductible is maybe as part of that. So you might want to say 1.8 if we want to think about that differently, depending on when we're invoiced. We also, I think, have some significant purchasing needs prior to the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30. So I don't want to give anyone the impression that we are turning back 1.8 million dollars. I'm not sure what that number is, but we hope by the next school committee meeting, we are going to be providing a list of purchases that we believe we're going to need to provide some remote learning in the fall. And again, the most immediate example might be we might need some additional iPads or cases because if we're sending iPads home with elementary school students and middle school students, we're going to want them to have more protection than they have in school. So that might be an example. We also talked about, Ms. Bond, you talked about screen time. If we have curricular consumables for some of our elementary students, math workbooks, we might need to buy two sets where we have one set in school and one set at home to limit some screen time if that's what parents want. So we're going to be providing some materials that we feel we need to pre-purchase using fiscal $20. These dollars ahead of fiscal 21 that we might not have budgeted in fiscal 21 because we weren't planning on what the hell, a pandemic? I don't know what to call it. We weren't planning on having school differently than typically than we than we would typically have it. So we may have some unbudgeted expenses that we are going to try to cover from some of the unspent money in fiscal 20. So Madam Chair, I don't want to get into any more detail until we have more detail to share. But the point I wanted to make with page two and page three is we're going to be spending some of that 1.9 million dollar balance to prepare for our summer programming and to open in the fall.
Sounds like a plan. The one thing that I have is I at some point, if there's any movement of money between salary, non-salary, either way, just we need to vote on it.
You all have to vote on it. That's correct because it changes purpose. Yes.
All right. So any committee members who would like to say anything?
Thank you, Dr. Conti. It was clarifying to my understanding and I think also helpful to people that are here or watching online. So thanks again.
Tom, you got any comments?
Comments? No, I just he put a Mr. Eiler's balloon pretty quickly there with his 1.9 million dollar surplus that he thought he had. But aside from that, I think those are legitimate expenses that we have to look at. And I don't know if we were planning on talking about this later or not, Dr. Conti. But how's town meeting working tomorrow night? I mean, typically we all go and answer questions and there's discourse and all that type of thing. Is there going to be and obviously this year we're outside and I know there's they're trying to limit things as much as possible. What's what's the plan from our perspective as far as town meeting goes?
Mr. Murphy, what am I expecting?
Well, are we are we is it going to be like a typical town meeting where we sit down the front and they ask questions and we answer them? Or is it is that going to be a limited interaction this year? They seem to be trying to get a whole three or four nights typical May town meeting done in one night. And and I just didn't know whether they were going to run it the same way.
No, again, I had a conversation with the moderator this morning. So he's made clear that his intention is to run one night of town meeting tomorrow night. I think it starts at 6 o'clock. If someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he said it officially starts at 6.
That's correct.
And so and I think he's going to try to run through the warrant. Again, the different warrant that Ms. Simon mentioned, the town meeting warrant. He's going to try to get through as much as he can. If there are things that he doesn't get to, I believe they're going to get pushed to September. He strongly encouraged town meeting members to get their questions answered ahead of time. So I know we've been hard at work answering questions that were emailed. Amy is going to take all the questions and all the answers that pertain to pertain to the town meeting warrant. And I think she's going to post them somewhere. And so again, I think the ask of town meeting members was to do some preparation for town meeting so that I think they will entertain questions. So that I think they will entertain questions, but I think if the questions if some of the pace continues as a typical town meeting, Mr. Murphy, I'm not sure we're going to get to a whole lot and there's no intention to run another night of town meeting. I think they would postpone a lot of the the other warrant votes until until September.
Okay, so from a practical standpoint, we as a committee should still be down there at town meeting as we usually are. Is that what I'm hearing?
The bug spray.
Yes, and we have football jerseys and helmets for everybody.
Excellent. Thank you.
Masks. Don't forget to mask, Tom.
The 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 other question that I had to Nicole that is when I when I looked at this 1.9, when I saw the monthly report, I asked her if there was anything contributing to that surplus that was not explainable or not common sense. And when we talked through it and when we looked at it in detail, there really wasn't. So what I'm saying is you would you would expect that we would spend less on utilities. That's contributing to that. You would expect that we would spend less on substitutes. That's contributing to that. A lot of the buildings only they they buy a lot of supplies, materials ahead of time, but some of them wait to buy the supplies, materials when they're needed. So we also had the school buildings not purchasing some of their instructional supplies for a third of the school year. So we had leftover money there. So there really weren't places where we had leftover money where it didn't make sense that we had it. We committed to paying everyone. So as you can imagine, we don't have a whole lot of money left over in our salary line. So that was budgeted, you know, accurately, and that is expended down. The majority of the money contributing to the to the balance is is in is in areas that you would expect.
I have a question for Dr. Conti, and thank you, Mr. Murphy, for bringing this up. So, Dr. Conti, will you, when you give your presentation of the the school budget, will you is that part of what you will present to town meeting that you have looked through these surpluses and there is a reason for them and that kind of thing?
Ms. Simon, I wasn't planning on it. The town meeting vote really focuses on fiscal 21. I think if people had questions about fiscal 20, tonight was the time to ask them. Obviously, if someone asks if we have leftover money, I'll say we do, but I don't know the exact dollar amount until we I hope have some idea as to what we're planning for in the fall and in some of the items we may need. So so I wasn't planning on presenting this information to to town meeting.
Martha, the moderator wouldn't accept questions on an old budget tomorrow night.
Okay. I I think, though, that what you just said makes sense so that I, yeah, so thank you.
Tom, were you, did you have anything else? I wasn't sure you were finished.
No, no, that's, I just wasn't sure what the what the procedures were going to be tomorrow night, so I just wanted to double check.
Okay, well, I've got the deep woods off. I'll remember to bring it.
Okay, I'll sit next to you.
Okay. Six feet away. Are there other committee questions?
On page two and three?
No, I mean, does anyone else on the school committee wish to speak? It's not looking like it. Okay.
There is a question about transportation from Miss Sikler.
Yeah, Erica, Bob, or Nicole?
Can you talk about transportation and why 150K and not more? Again, it may just be timing. Nicole, have we been billed for for June yet?
Yes, so the 150,000 dollar balance remaining on that line accounts for the agreement that we came to with Trombley, which captured a percentage off from the closure through the end of the school year.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone that oftentimes at the end of the school year and and into July, we get some surprises. We got a really big one a few years ago. And the the idea that we would know at this point in time exactly what would go back to the town is we're just not anywhere near close to that. You know, there will be bills coming in in July and we'll go, oh, what? Oh, yeah, that's right. We have to pay this. Any other questions on this?
So we can go to page four, Bob? So again, Nicole, let me just do a little bit of a background, then you can explain the numbers and maybe we can do, we'll do a more detailed circuit breaker conversation with Mr. Foss and Ms. Bond. We can do that offline or at another time. But the accommodated budget is sort of unique to Burlington. It's where the town in the accommodated part of their budget puts the most volatile expenses that they have. So health insurance, for instance, in the town budget exists in the accommodated in the accommodated section of the budget. Again, years before my arrival in Burlington and Mr. Murphy and Ms. Monaco can get exact if you'd like. They took, they agreed, the school committee and the selectmen agreed to take some of our most volatile school expenses, which have to do with special education, especially out of district placements, and put them under the accommodated account. So technically, this is a town account that the school district manages. So and what that affords us, which is great, is if we have a change in services or a move in, which can be very expensive, it doesn't pit our children with disabilities against our regular ed programming or our regular special ed programming. So the programs that are in the accommodated account, and again, I hopefully I'll get them all and Nicole will make sure I do, is we have our out of district tuitions. So students who that we can't educate in district need to be educated out of district, those tuitions are paid for out of this account. Our lab students, we'll have a whole nother conversation about the lab collaborative and lab stands for Lexington, Arlington, Burlington, Bedford, Belmont. So we have students in lab programming. That money comes out of this account. Our preschool, we're obligated to provide education to students that are identified out of early early intervention when they turn age three. So we provide services for age three and four year olds in our preschool. We provide them those services alongside typically developing children. The families of the typically developing children pay tuition. And again, that revenue goes to the town. It does not go to the school district because this is a town account. But the salaries of our preschool teachers come out of the accommodated budget. I believe the salary actually in the benefits, but again, Nicole will correct me if I'm getting too far ahead of myself. And we have a specialized program at Pine Glen, a developmental skills class for a lot of our special learners. And that program as well comes out of the accommodated account. So the tuitions for all those programs come out of this account. And the transportation, because we're also mandated to provide transportation to the students who benefit from these programs as well. That's that's another that's another expense. So that's why these costs are separated out from the operating budget. It is a wonderful benefit that the school district I think gets the benefit of because it doesn't allow our highly volatile mandated costs associated with delivering services to our children with disabilities impact our other programming and regular special ed programming that are occurring in our operating budget. So with that, Nicole, you can go over the the numbers and I'm sorry to talk so much.
Thank you. So I think Dr. Conti summed this up sort of perfectly. The one line on here that is
Nicole, can you just say that one more time? Because I think that's a rare thing. I summed it up.
I will not repeat that.
She said sort of.
The one line on here that is likely subject to to change is line 73, the transportation line. One of the large portions of that make up the expenses in this line is the transportation of students through our lab network. So as Dr. Conti mentioned, our five member districts of lab all sort of participate in a pretty much like a ride sharing. So if we're driving through one town to to bring a student to their day placement, and there's a room on the bus to pick up another student from another one of our member districts there, we're able to share the cost of of that ride. And that's something that lab coordinates for us, which is a major cost avoidance when it comes to expenses here for transportation. With that being said, the agreements between the member districts and the five providers, the vendors that lab uses to provide these services that they coordinate, pretty much all of the lab member districts needed to be in agreement with all of these vendors before we can sort of move forward with that all of reductions are concrete. So that's still in the works. And it's more time consuming just because we have to have all of the the lab member districts in agreement. And there's multiple vendors that we've been working with. So that that should be finalizing up shortly. And that number is likely to be adjusted for for the the next the next financial update.
Nicole, adjusted down, correct?
Yes.
It's only going to get less expensive.
I meant the remaining budget was going to be increased. So yes. I don't know if there's there's any questions about this or
So again, the bottom line in this one is important as well. So if you see the 448 dollar balance, that means we're not over expending what we projected to budget for fiscal 20 in our accommodated account. So again, from the school committee's perspective, from the Ways and Means Subcommittee perspective, looks like we're going to finish out both operating and accommodated with a positive balance. We just don't know exactly what that positive balance is going to be yet.
Okay, are there any questions, committee members? Hearing nothing. Okay, anyone else have a question? Okay, Eric, I guess we can move on.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm again, I'm about done. I think the last item is the Student Opportunity Act. And I think that's been delayed or postponed. There's really no state budget at this point. So I don't really know what that is. More than likely, we're probably Nicole, what was the number again on the Student Opportunity Act? But but again, that was the governor's budget. We don't even know what the number is going to be. So
It was 105,000.
105,000 originally. I'm not sure if that's going to stay. If it does stay, we'll have to take a separate vote on that money, even though that money is going to come in through our chapter 70, which is our regular state funding anyway. And more than likely, if our operating budget is approved, we would just assign the one of the two nursing positions or 1.4 of the new nursing positions to that money because that would be an eligible expense for the Student Opportunity Act, just to just to make it simple. We also potentially have CARES money coming in and Nicole, CARES money is the federal money coming in for COVID relief. Is that correct?
Yes, Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund, and I believe the total on that is 112,000.
And again, I'm not sure what our planning has to be for that 112,000. They have certain eligible categories. I believe PPE, protective equipment, is one of those categories. So we may, depending on the prices or what we have to do, we may take some of those costs out of that that federal that federal stream for for COVID. So Nicole, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, so again, so the Student Opportunity Act money is Massachusetts state money. The the federal money is is different from the Student Opportunity Act. So we'll make sure this is all straight when we come to you if we need a vote for that. So, Madam Chair, I believe that concludes the agenda. I just have one announcement if if that's
Go for it.
Sadly, the committee members know one of my favorite events every year is the Burlington Evening Academy graduation. The graduation is actually happening remotely tomorrow night during town meeting. So it'll be the first Evening Academy graduation I think I've missed in 12 years. But Ms. Bond and and Mr. Foss, I think hopefully next year you'll be able to attend the Evening Academy graduation. We we have a group of students where traditional high school doesn't really work for them and they do a lot of work. We have teachers who work a second shift. We bring them in four nights a week. And they, we progress them all through to their high school diplomas, and I think we really have an impact in their lives. And I think if you talk to the other committee members, that graduation ceremony is very moving. High school isn't easy for for everybody. And I think the Evening Academy staff under the leadership of Jill Graham, one of our outstanding high school teachers, I call her Principal Graham for the Evening Academy. She just does a great job and she gets some Burlington children through to a high school diploma that normally wouldn't have gotten through. And again, that graduation is sadly is tomorrow night at 7 remotely. We partner with Simon Youth Academy, Simon Youth Foundation. And again, the Simon Company owns malls all over North America. They're an owner of the Burlington Mall, is a Simon Mall. Their foundation supports alternative education and they've been a partner in Burlington, I think, for about three years, Mr. Murphy. Is that I'm trying to think when we had that initial meeting, three or four years, right?
I think that's about right. Yep.
Three or four years ago. So you'll see the Burlington, the Simon Academy at Burlington is what is what it's called. And I think over the years, they've made scholarship money available to our Evening Academy students. And I think they've given, boy, close to, they give close to $20,000 a year to our Evening Academy graduates. And those students typically aren't the ones receiving support on our local scholarship night. So it's just been a great partnership. And again, I can't recommend attending that ceremony enough when we are allowed to have them again in person. So that's happening. I just wanted to give a shout out to the teachers and to our Evening Academy graduates. They work really hard and and they I apologize to be missing that event. So Mrs. Monaco, with that, it is 9:30. I am, I overtalked. I apologize. But I was trying to explain some things as we go and I will do less explaining as we move forward.
Okay, I have a couple of quick things. Sharon, would you please remind the new members when they have an opportunity to take the training? And Eric, I think it's time for to have to set up a time for Darren to come out and go over the public meeting issues.
Okay. Yeah, because especially these days with social media, Facebook, other things, the open meeting law is is hard enough, but with social media, it's a little bit even, it's even more complex. So we'll we'll have the school committee attorney, who is Darren Klein from Copelman and Page. He's a great resource. He does trainings. You all have worked with Darren again for longer than I've been here, so over 12 years, he knows the district well. And again, I, he's a great resource. And again, to the new members, he is the committee's attorney. He is not, he is not my attorney. So just don't, he is your resource and he's he's our labor counsel. So personnel decisions, all those other things, really, he's involved with all of that work. But if you have questions, he's a wonderful resource for you. And Mrs. Monaco, I will schedule a time to have him come out either in person or remotely, depending on what's happening to do a training on the on the open meeting law. either in person or remotely, depending on what's happening to do a training on the open meeting law.
Okay, just for an informational point, if anyone has anything where they feel they need information from our attorney, either go through Eric or the chairman, whoever that is at that time, to get to Darren. We don't just contact him directly because our legal bills go through the roof. Okay?
There's nothing wrong with that.
I'm sorry?
Making the point that that's not a bad thing.
Is this the lawyer's kids have to eat too?
Well, and go to college.
And go to college, yeah, okay. Does anyone have any question, any further question or comment on?
Yeah, Chris, please.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry to extend things. Just wanted to comment on something that Dr. Conti mentioned. I wanted to verify. In looking at the town budget, the accommodated account is listed separate, on a separate line from total operating on local education. But they're totaled into a single numbered line item for local education. So it's always been my impression that both the operating account and the accommodated account are under the school committee's bottom line authority and that the accommodated is not under the town authority. Did I misunderstand that or?
Mr. Isler, we might be saying the same thing in different ways. What I was trying to say is if we have extra money in the accommodated account budget, that's, that goes back to, that's sort of, from my perspective, that goes, that's town, that goes to the town. So we manage that, we manage that carefully. So I do think it's under our direction. But where it's, sort of where it's presented in the big town budget is in the town section of the accommodated. So there's a, there's a school portion of that in that town section. I guess maybe I said that unclearly and I apologize if I did. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I think we're in sync. Thanks.
No, I apologize. I was just maybe thinking about it differently. I think about that as down money that we are managing.
John, that's always been kind of a confusing point for, with the Ways and Means Subcommittee. As far as the school committee is concerned, the accommodated account is the town's budget. Whether or not we can have any control over it, we see it as the town's budget, the town money. And you know, whatever is there, we don't even look at it. It's town money.
Okay, I think operationally, that's a very good way to be thinking about it. I just wanted to clarify that I think, you know, officially legally, it's no different than the operating budget as far as that's concerned. But I think, yeah, as agreed with the town, the intent is to manage it as a separate budget effectively. So definitely in agreement.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Martha.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco votes aye. We are adjourned. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. We'll all see you tomorrow night.
Good night, everybody.
All right, good night.